So Woodland Hills office or Woodland Hills guests?
Woodland Hills guests.
Lowercase.
Yeah.
What is it?
Guest of W H.
All lowercase, no spaces?
No spaces, no nothing. Two zero one six. W H two zero one six.
Is W H for that?
Guest and then O F W H. I know.
Is this the same camera that you've been using all along? It doesn't look as good a resolution up there as I I've seen in the past, at least it seems to me.
On the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same camera. I've got it a little further back so you can see everyone.
It seems like the image has been sharpened. It's auto focus.
I like giving it a more forward and then because I heard it was on the screen.
Okay, are we ready, Jody?
We are ready.
Okay. We'll call a meeting to order tonight, Planning Commission, Wednesday, May eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Present are Commissioner Severn Johnson, Lori Thomas, John Wallace and Wayne Franson. We may have Larry Henry joining us later. And Ted also missed his use tonight. We appreciate John being here today. Severn, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to be here as Planning Commission. City residents of Woodland Hills, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to work and serve in our community and in a great place in which we, this time now, we pray for our guidance as we navigate the items that are on our agenda. We may be able to understand the issues at hand and able to apply those things that need to be applied for the in the best interest of those that live here. We're grateful for this opportunity we have to govern ourselves in this society and in this great nation, the great that we make. Do so with prudence and with efficacy. Let me say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Any public comment from those present?
Yes.
Okay. Business items, item number five, approval of April twenty, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission minutes. Those have been sent out to everybody. I didn't get any response for changes or corrections. I'll take a motion to approve those if someone wants to make the motion.
Maybe I should approve the minutes of April twenty.
Okay. There's the first. Is there a second to that motion? All right, Severn, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Next item, number six on the agenda, is our fencing ordinance. I know several of those tuned into the discussion that we had, I had briefly with the planning, with the city council on it, kind of a go-no-go with them to see if they wanted us to pursue it or just forget it and leave it as it is. All but one suggested that we continue to to see what we could do to put it in a condition that the city council would be willing to sign off on. One who didn't vote for that was David Pratt.
I was gonna ask.
And he's just against fences in general, so it wasn't particular other than just fences in general, so. But he got outvoted. So the the general consensus seemed to be, at least for two of them, that the issue of on a corner lot, the fence being a potential barrier to traffic coming down the road. And that was a little bit of concern with Ben, but but not as much. He has other concerns. And they 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 didn't object. I said, we're trying to take baby steps here and maybe address this issue first. They said, there's some other issues that we feel that may ought to be considered and we get past this, then we'll come back to you with some other thoughts on changes that we feel need to be made to approve the fence ordinance overall. So there was no objection to that, so. Anyway, I I put together a couple of diagrams just to use for our reference and then this 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 one that looks like this. Ted sent me a little diagram that kind of bears some of this, but not as. I find it is, I find the diagram that he used a little bit difficult to to understand.
That's when they emailed us?
Yeah, that's why. His is from an engineering perspective with engineering data. Yeah. And so this is this is more distinct in the way that it shows what we're what we're trying to do and it's just a this twenty-five foot was just, you know, we could make it whatever we want. I understood that from Ted's previous conversation that there were some equations that they would use depending upon the speed limit and so forth on the road as to how much coverage that triangle should have without any barriers to prevent somebody from seeing traffic.
Our highest speed in the city is thirty-five, right?
Yep, yep.
So I think if we just, and I I suspect we probably won't have any roads that could go any faster than that, right?
No, there won't be anything down.
Go down.
Down five.
So if we just gauge everything on the thirty-five, then it should take care of anything less than that.
Yep. So anyway, this is what we're trying to depict and and show. So with with appropriate verbiage, I think this is what our previous verbiage was, is this. Fences or hedges, hedges taller than forty-two inches shall not be located less than thirty feet from a property line abutting a street right of way and can run along the side or rear lot property lines as long as the fence does not extend beyond the front plane of the residence. So that that last part is what I think was maybe completely understood. If there's a better way, we have of saying it, of incorporating additional language in in the ordinance to further clarify what what these pictures will 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 depict, so.
So two questions there. I mean, if we're working with a thirty-foot setback on the home, then the fence would be thirty feet back in theory, right?
Correct, at the on the corner.
On the corner lot. So if we're shooting for potential twenty-five foot, then that thirty would solve that, is what I'm saying, right?
You think so? And I I I don't know why I wouldn't, so.
Yeah, if a house can't be fenced with thirty, they won't let the fence retrieve past the front plane of the home. That by default would create a thirty-foot setback on the fence.
But the problem with that is that that can't extend beyond the front plane of the hole applies only in four seasons. There is nothing in the fencing ordinance relating to the rest of Woodland Hills that says anything about extending beyond the front plane of the house. The way it's written, you can have a fence beyond the front plane of the house.
In the rest of it?
In the rest of Woodland Hills, because it's not a drench. And that's one thing that we need to probably address. The other thing that Ben has an issue with, he wants us to define what the front of the house is. Because just like
Who's that? Ben?
Ben Hillier.
Oh, Ben Hillier, I'm saying, I'm saying, okay. Right, sorry.
But, you know, wait until I talk about Ben has something.
That's fine, I tell you, there's a Ben right here.
Anyway, I mean, it's just like your neighbor behind you. Where's the front of his house?
Yeah, I don't even go there with him.
I mean, his, his house faces the back of.
His front door faces my.
Your backyard.
But I I think we, there are going to be exceptions like that, that we're gonna.
Okay, so let me.
And if we said that, I mean, the rest of it.
So I I currently have a somebody in my area that has a fence that they've been trying to put up. You're saying they can't.
If if it's along the street, there's further restrictions.
Okay, that's what prevents it. Okay.
Along the street, you've got to be at least thirteen. All right, so.
So that puts it back closer to the plane of the house. So so that does self-solve itself in not four seasons.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in our forces.
I mean, this and this is, since you're talking about, you got a, that's a side. The side of that, it's a little, it's not in there directly north, south, east and west. And the houses aren't going to be that way. We look at some of Great and, you know, start building a cul-de-sac. So it's, you know, it can get just kind of situated wherever it benefits the house.
So is it a verbiage clarification we're looking for?
Yeah.
Do we care if it's?
I mean, I I gave the example of my house. The front of the house really faces low floor. My next-door neighbor, the Irishman's. Their their front door of their house really faces the park.
Yeah, they're forty-five degrees off.
Yeah.
So when you talk, could you say front plane and then maybe in parentheses clarify that
Street side?
Street side or based on, you know, something referencing the street side.
Do we care if it's in their front yard or is it the street side that we're looking at?
I think the issue is is the street side, the the look. When you're driving down the street, what what is presented there? What what does somebody see?
And remember, why did we give it down at four seasons? It was to meet the intention of the city council about having a wildlife corridor. And so we said, they can put it on the back property line, the side property line. And then have the front of the house clear, so you've got a wildlife corridor that comes down both sides where the houses are and the road the sides.
So that we use the plain in that definition down there. They have their own separate definition. It's it's different.
So are we are we working on four seasons?
No, no.
No.
Working on rest of the city, remainder of the.
Four seasons, four seasons is in place right now at this point.
I mean, as as you read in my analysis, there are issues with four seasons. But those are the ones that Wade's talking about, maybe dealing with later on.
Come back to it.
Because, I mean, you're defining in in one ordinance, you define the color, you define the type of fence and all these other things. In four seasons, if those things are not all defined, it says you can have no chain link. Up here, you can have chain link around a spark fort or or a garden and you can have coated chain link elsewhere.
So there's some ambiguity to.
No, I I think if we wanted to find plane of the home and streetscape or street side, I think that's an easy thing to do. But that's the big anger. Just add next to front plane, you know, street side. How would we want to work that? So that it's clarified, that's the question.
I mean, we've already got in there, with on the street side, it has to be thirty feet back from the property line. That's already there as it exists now. The the change that I think we want to make initially is to allow it on the property line in the backyard and the side yard that is not on a street side. That's not a corner lot.
That's the case. That's what started the whole thing, was a fence on the property.
Yeah, I realize that was what started this whole.
So, well, I know how, then that we want to structure language then to allow the fence on the on, I guess, I don't know if we want to call it non-street.
Into?
Non-street.
Yeah, I think we just referenced one, because the street side is X or whatever, and then everything else is based on that. So non-street, street side, non-street, however you want to do it. Because you're right, front backyards here, like I said, I've got a neighbor behind me that's front yard, back yard, back yard's a front yard. If that's how it's worded, they could. Yeah, they could.
So we need to treat some other references in in defining what we want to do. Okay. Lori?
Yeah, I agree. I think street side, the houses are turned every which way.
They were.
We're just coming down our street and everybody's spacing different.
Yeah, I mean, look at the
My street.
Just that, yeah, of the street.
New Cali.
Cali's.
Yeah, they face.
They're facing the street.
My house. And facing the street, ours faces the street, you face uphill.
Yeah, ours is mostly the street though.
Well, then you get flag lots. We've got a lot of flag lots, flag lots too, so whatever.
We don't, we don't allow them anymore, but we've got a.
But they exist.
In there.
And see, their front yard on the flag lot is going to be the guy at front's backyard, and if he comes on the fence all the way to his property line, you know, that that gets to be complicated.
Jesus, I need to think, I mean.
Like, so I just don't want to know.
If you have a flag lot, you still have a street side, I mean, the side poses to the street, and what does that?
Yeah, the lot, the lot in behind is, you're gonna have to designate.
In front of one that has a flag lot.
Yeah, that's actually what I was thinking of.
Yeah.
But his neighbor in front of him could put a fence up. Currently, he could put a fence up that can fly through the property.
Yeah, yeah.
And the fact that the ordinance says it has to be seventy-five percent open right now, that that didn't even convince Dave Pratt of anything. I just said, Dave, you said, why the fence right now? It has to be seventy-five percent? I don't want any contest.
And I understand that. There's something about openness, so. I mean, a concern I do have is not as much four seasons, but the remainder of the city is wildlife. I mean, we've we've got a lot of here. We've got big hills. And whatever we do, we've got to make sure we work with that. Now, you get a lot of big animals going through my yard, and I love it.
You have elk going through or?
I haven't seen the elk, but I've got the deer, I've got the turkeys, we've got mountain lions up by us. I'm still waiting to see a bear. The elk are down a little bit lower, but I suspect they're probably up there. I just haven't.
Well, and the issue with all that development that's going to.
It's going to change their, it's going to change their migration. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm curious, intrigued and concerned about that, my impact on the bigger game, yeah.
Yeah.
Ted, you want me to throw something?
Yeah, no, it's all good.
And then, you know, I, should a wildlife study be done as additional development comes in?
So there's been, in fact, Robert, Bob Otley was kind of moving forward with, working with Randy Larson to do a study to see if our city was really overpopulated with deer, primarily with deer.
I think it is.
Not true. If you really need to be a biologist to tell you that lie, but that ends in four.
Yeah, and it's just, you know, it's just going to be a matter of time. Somebody gets killed in a car accident.
I wonder how many cars since they have been this year because we were driving up in a deer pod into the back of our cars as it was crossing the street, and Sid hit another one, Keenan hit one, and I, I mean, so we've had three in the past two years.
My daughter, a deer hit her. She had hit a deer.
Yeah, a deer hit us.
Then you've got Severn over here. Was it bicycle? And they're not good for my health, like, without me here.
I I think it's dangerous. I was walking on the side of my house. There's a deck and a clump of trees and it was dark and I passed a deer on this narrow path.
Really?
I couldn't see it, but I could feel it on the ground as it ran past me. And I thought I could have been killed by a deer and I would have been so embarrassed to die being killed by a deer.
Need some claws or something, right?
Yeah, right over by a deer.
You'd be well remembered.
Oh, that lady was killed by a deer.
By a deer, yeah.
Well, a number of years ago, Peggy Sorensen was in her yard and her dog was out there, and a deer approached. This deer butted her in the chest.
Oh, my goodness.
Just, just hit her.
So my sister and her little friend said that they were chased by a deer and we didn't believe them. But then, you know, Barbara Schultz? Her husband was chased by her. There was a baby and a mother and that mother was chasing people.
Yeah.
Yes, and having multiple times. It was scary.
So I I I just throw out, as we, as we work with this, we need to keep that in mind, the wildlife. I think that's our, we want to preserve it because I think that's part of what most of us do, is that they exist and if there's any way to coexist, I'd love to preserve that.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on the on the word, on word drafting too? I mean.
Okay, so why don't we want fences all the, why don't we want fences just all around the property line? Explain that to us.
Well, by keeping it in, it allows them to move through.
And it gives the openness.
Because if you're five feet from each property line, you have a ten foot. Assuming everybody put up a fence, you have five feet on each lot, that's a ten foot opening for us.
I don't like that idea.
It's weird.
I gotta keep front yards open and allow them to pass through that.
And I I I don't think, I don't think anything, it wouldn't pass the council if we brought it all the way up to the front. I know, but I'm just saying that, that we were, that's an area that we're locked into. Now, how do we craft the language to to?
Well, if it's just identifying front plane of the house, I E. or or reference street side regardless of positioning of home, street side, or maybe you just put that as a definition. Street side of lot is considered front regardless of house position. I'm sure there's a fancier way to word that.
I mean, we already have in the ordinance that the street side has to be thirty. Period. It's already there. But you have some.
We don't need to worry about anything.
Well, but you have some homes at thirty-foot setback, some's at fifty. You still want it playing in the house, otherwise the, if it was a thirty-foot setback on the fence, then they could come twenty feet out in front of their house. If you were just holding the fence straight into the thirty foot, if you say the front plane of the house, then then regardless of the position of that house, that is the front of the house.
Okay, now, on flag lot homes, I would think, I mean, I'm guessing that they would want a fence in their backyard whichever way it faces, whether it's the closest to the street or not, so they can have their dog back there or their children or something, or their garden. So do we need to say something different for flag lots? They can be allowed to fence their backyard regardless of the street side?
If it's not street side, they could, but if it is, we don't want a fence because that's part of the the corridor and that's part of the 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 look, the openness, and if they back up against the street, we don't want a fence on that street.
Do any flag lots, or they just kind of?
Most of them are Indian, they're not usually on streets. They're usually just long driveways.
Yeah.
Which is a fire department scares us. Does anybody want to go four hundred feet to three inches?
Yeah.
I've done it, I know.
But I think that distinction needs to be included in there, so we don't, if if there's some one somewhere that we don't get a fence on a backyard that up is up against the road.
That's a whole other area of verbiage that needs to be like that.
Well, but but once again, we've already said thirty feet back from the street. In other words, the backyard or the front yard or the side yard is thirty feet back.
But a flag lot might be starting at three hundred feet back from the street, so they could fence their whole lot based on that definition.
They have to just come in thirty feet.
Unless you say the front plane of the house, then that could imply.
Yeah.
And and not refer to the street side. That would keep it open somehow.
I don't, I don't have a problem with with putting the restriction like we did for four seasons. So you have fence cannot extend beyond the front plane of the house. But Ben's concern is going to be defining the front plane of the house. Where the front door is, where the.
Well, see, that doesn't work because my back door neighbors, so, so that's where you 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 clarify that the front plane of the house is portion of the house that is facing the street.
For fence purposes.
For fence purposes.
So they couldn't have a fence on you, on the front property line.
You know, it's a front yard. And I mean, if it says it has to be thirty feet off the street, that protects their core backyard, the street. Which protects the, generally, yeah, otherwise that's accepted as a backyard, they can, they can run all the way to the street, except that verbiage says it must be thirty feet from the street. We we, this isn't a one-size-fits-all, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
I mean, yeah, and and if we look at one of the contentions we have right now of one hill nest, thirty feet back from the road, their house actually faces their neighbor. That's where the front door is.
Yeah, they're connected here.
And where their could partially constructed the fence goes beyond that front plane of theirs. But if they just move it back thirty feet from where it is, would it hurt to extend it past the front plane of the house?
To the property line next door.
Well, and actually to the driveway, it's worth it.
Yeah, this is.
In that case.
I definitely think if we want to work with front plane, we need to clarify that that is street side, we have homes that have been built three hundred and sixty degrees.
Yes. Now, we need to keep in mind too that a forty-two inch fence can be put on the front of the property. It does have to have that thirty foot setback, so just something that we need to be aware of that we're not.
So question forty-two, is that pretty standard? Because I'm thinking if somebody's driving in a Ferrari, they're not gonna seal that forty-two inch fence.
Well, then, and remember, up here, that's pretty seventy-five percent open. And so like, Jeezy Craftery has a fence like the one we put up as a part in the dedication site.
This, this.
And it's.
Ninety percent.
And it's.
And it's, I think Sam's is thirty-six inches, if I remember right.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure which one's magical.
And we find one that was forty-eight.
Maybe, I can't remember now. I don't know, it's taller than ours. Okay, what other anomalies are we, want to make sure that we cover in the correct language to make sure that we're closing as many loopholes as we can in in the. make sure that we're closing as many loopholes as we can in, in the process, any other things?
Deal with the, the triangle?
Yeah.
I found it.
You found it in your office?
Yeah. Yeah, it's 2.3.10, in the construction and development standards. No fence, wall structure, planting, or topographic or ready arrangement shall be erected or established on any corner lot, which will instruct the viewer with driver of the vehicle approaching the intersection. The unstructured corner shall meet a triangle, triangular area formed by the street property lines and the line connecting at points 35 feet from the intersection of the street lines, or in the case of a rounded property corner, from the intersection of the street lines produced along the sub-�angent sub-ter to a set point of intersection. Existing vegetation not in conflict with the wildland interface ordinance of the land or other ordinance which regularly removal of vegetation may not be removed unless the planning commission determines a hazard exists.
Is, is there a diagram of that?
So can I make a suggestion on that? How Ted take that verbiage, draw it out in English? Then maybe we, post the diagram, we add it to that, that'll solve that, and that's done it all.
One, one thing Ted's definition says, it also said that other things couldn't block your vision, like trees or.
What is that word?
What it says.
What is, what are all these things?
Because then we're in conflict with the wildland interface ordinance, which says you don't remove trees unless we say that there's a hazard.
How, how does the first part of that ordinance read, so read that again, first part?
No fence, wall structure, planting, or topographic or ready arrangement shall be erected or established on any corner lot which will instruct the viewer with driver of the vehicle approaching the intersection.
So it doesn't address natural vegetation, it's there already. So you don't add anything, but I think it needs to be clear in that trying. Well, I think that's what.
And then it says existing vegetation, vegetation not in conflict with the wildland interface ordinance of the land or other ordinance which regularly removal of vegetation may not be removed unless planning commission determines a hazard exists.
I mean, you've got a lot of corner lots.
The visibility is tight.
Good, no, is it?
Could I, I'd suggest have Craig look at, because I know there's the fire part, too, that technically it's supposed to be cleared with.
And if it's, if it's in conflict with the wildland fire interface, and, and, and as such, it has to be removed.
Yes.
Already identified, yeah.
So I, maybe have Craig look at that verbiage, too, see how that might apply for him on fire. Let's have Ted look at the verbiage and translate it into a diagram, and that may solve all that right there.
Okay, let me look at this house, and tell me, this is the front door, that little stick out part.
It's right here, front door.
What would you say is the front plane? Would you come out here?
Likely, how, I'm saying where his driveway.
Yeah.
Where his driveway is, is the, is the front. So this would be in the street front.
Well.
So the plane.
Here's the street up there.
So does he, does he come into, off of the cul-de-sac then? See, there's no street back here, man, no street here, so I, I think the plane at his house is going to run from across that way. Getting that part of the house that's.
Because I think sometimes it's even hard to say where the front plate of the house is.
Is this house terminated in a angle?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's set way, way back in the lot.
So there's the front door, that little stick out part. And then, if you look at the road, and then.
So I think if you just say, front plate of the house, that's, that's what you're left with, that line that comes across the, maybe that's part of the garage there.
Yeah.
And goes from one side of the property to the other side of the property, across the garage.
Again, this, you know, cul-de-sac lot, things change, but I kind of go, plane would be that way, and plane would be that way. And it'd be slightly different on each side of the house there, because the one part creeps out. And again, with all that concrete, you know, that changes that, too, so, yeah.
Is that what, did he say the same thing I did?
Yeah.
I think we're seeing the same concern or shape, channel this.
So he can fence.
He can fence part of the, yeah.
But the last part of that lot. Sides and backs, but he'll have a whole big front yard. E- even though we're saying that it can't come, if we use the plane of the house, and in that instance, that sets back
That house is.
Probably way back.
Yeah, that's probably 100 feet back.
100 feet, so.
Yeah.
Would he, would they not be able to put a fence then? Be on the plane, even though it's just, it's more than 30 feet back? How, how do we want to put that in there?
You know, and if they wanted to do a fence, I mean, probably they just want a privacy, whoops, thing right along their neighbor's border there for privacy, because you can kind of see from one yard to the other, but that would be in front of their house, so they couldn't.
They couldn't.
Even though it's 100 feet off the road or more.
It, it. If the last we, if we built in a, you know, it has to be we could say, if we wanted to, to meet, the, the plane of the house, unless, build an exception into it, if the plane sets back further than 30 feet, allow them to go to the 30 feet and put the fence there, which would be beyond the plane of the house in a few instances. And they might, might, might find that in kind of a cul-de-sac situation, where they're setting a home further back into the cul-de-sac way beyond the 30 or 50-foot, you know, front.
Right, we should always have something like, is in this revisionary, that said that exceptions can be used for a modified planning commission. When they have a case, this kind of like that one you guys have been looking at, where they may want to have something beyond the front plate of the house. And if they had legitimate reasons why, we can consider it.
I think it's a, I like the idea of, of an option, where, where things are absolute, and, and there are a lot of other unique situations, you know, that could come up, to have that built into the
Yeah.
to the ordinance, I think that's a plus for the ordinance.
What if you just said that all fences had to be 30 feet or more away from the road, and and they could be on the property line, and that's it?
I mean, that's what we're trying to propose, but then again.
That was too, I mean, just to keep it away from the streets. And.
And, 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 you know, in other words, of a close, when we eliminate that 30-foot part from the roadway.
Yeah, I don't think that's any, because, yeah, that's pretty, everybody's.
You know. The only, the option that we gave, that, that Carrie got upset about, was that we said you could put it on the property line if on the roadside, that was the side yard, and she didn't like that.
Yeah, on the corner lot, on the corner lot, yeah. And she's, I think she's on a corner lot, so she's, if I even call it right, so she's speaking of, you know, something that would affect her. And that's why I want a corner lot. Would we want to give an allowance then for, or build into allowance, or just leave it at, you know, planning commission option, if, if the setback is further than 30 feet, that the fence does not, it has to be 30 feet.
There's no exception to the 30-foot.
But not, not the plane of the house, not, not follow that.
Should the plane of the home be further back than 30 feet, an adjustment or an allowance might be made. But never too less than the 30 feet or something like that.
Just still leaving the option of the planning commission instead of building that automatically into the.
But they can clear that the 30-foot will never be.
Yeah.
And that's a hard task.
I think that would be good, because you're gonna have some odd, you know, twist.
I mean, overall, there aren't, percentage-wise, there aren't a lot of fences. For the most part, it's more open than not.
If I can afford to, I could really talk, beautiful fence all around, I like to keep the deer off. I have lush plants.
Remember, remember, now I can clear 6 feet?
Oh, yeah.
6 feet?
Oh, 6 feet.
The deer can clear 6 feet.
But if I could multiple 6-foot fences, maybe that would be.
We, we have a situation where if you watch the, those fences, they don't take much space to go over.
They say.
They need to go over three or four of them.
Geez, I thought it was taller, that it was maybe 10 or 12 of them.
6 they clear, I think 8 gets tough.
8's unclear. We never had, to my knowledge, we never had a deer in our garden that has an 8-foot-high fence.
Now, here's another anomaly that we learned today, looking at somebody's fence request for the garden. The garden can't be more than 2, can't be more than 600 square feet to have a high fence. Have a taller than 6-foot fence. So the question was thrown out, I have two gardens.
Sure.
One, one of 400, the other of 400, two gardens, and that way you meet the, the under 600 square feet requirement, and you can then have two fences that are tall around two gardens.
I don't know if I can do that, but I just look at that and say, who wants 800 feet of gardens?
Well, we've got a lot, it's just all.
More than 800 feet of garden fence.
It's a lot of work, yeah. Okay, does anybody want to volunteer to try to craft, craft some language?
No, even.
Well, let's see what Ted, what Ted can put together with.
Yeah, I would like to have an attachment exhibit that we get attached.
Let's talk, I'll talk to Craig.
Okay.
And ask him to look at that and see where that balances with the wildland.
Because if we can get it just, if we can get it all to blend, that would be ideal, I just, it's.
Yeah. Okay, I will work on that.
So I'll make a motion, and then talk to Ted, and then talk to the chief, get his feedback, and then work on packaging that for the next.
Okay, John made a motion, is there a second to that? Is that a second, Lori?
Yes, a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No. Well, put some things together, send it out.
Yeah, maybe put some, do that.
Item seven, development agreement with Summit Creek. Ben, you want to do this front date?
Yeah, it's with the attorneys, for them to do their, whatever they do.
It's with your attorneys.
Uh, ours, and then I know they've, you know, I haven't been able to get a little bit today to find out where he's at, I know he attempted to try and get with Craig, and it may have already happened, I'm just.
Craig hasn't said anything to us, but that, that doesn't mean that they haven't been talking, so.
So it's kind of down to where they do their final back and forth, and then get it to where we and City would come back for, I think, a final time to, or at least hopefully the final time to make any additional final adjustments, and get it to where it's in a kind of an agreed conversion, that would then be ready for your review. Um, it's public hearing and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So.
We had a, Dave and I met with Summit Creek a week and a half ago.
Something like that.
And I think we pretty much ironed out all of the, the issues, not necessarily maybe the legality of things, but, but the issues that we wanted to go into development agreement.
Right.
So Summit Creek took that down, by the three attorneys, and we're waiting to get that feedback, and then brought it to our attorneys, and Summit Creek is doing that in conjunction with her attorney review.
Right.
So it'll come back, we wanted to have it pretty, in a final, final draft, everybody's agreement with it, and then the, the ordinance requires a public hearing. Uh, the same as we would do if, if we're a land use ordinance, because we're exempting them from
Certain things.
new land use ordinances, uh, for the, for the life of the development agent, so. Public hearing has to be held by planning commissioners, by City Council, and then the recommendation from us to City Council, and the City Council has final final decision on it, so we're close, I think, and so that's kind of where everything is at. I sent you all a copy of what was the last draft that we worked together, now that might get tweaked a little bit with the attorneys and here and there, I don't know, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up to that. Uh, and, and, any questions?
Question for Ben, I'm on the PTR committee, but our, it's weird talking about this last night. So the $500 per lot thing, so I'm just looking at here, estimated city trail improvement fee, so is the intent of that money to go for future trail trails?
Yeah, it would be.
The city can't take and use that for anything, it needs to go for trails.
Well, I think it's the city's money, and when they have it, they can do what they want with it, I guess.
Well, if in the development agreement, it spells out that it's.
Says the big city trail improvement fee, and the $100.
That's intended.
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent, right? Ultimately, when the city decides to do it, that is the city's decision, right? It's in your hands.
You're not going to police that.
No, but, but, but again, as a member of the PTR, I want to honor the intent.
Of course.
So that's why I'm asking for a little clarification.
Right.
And Dave, Dave and I feel the same way, and so that's why it will be presented to the City Council.
Okay.
Then it go into a special trail slide, and that's to maintain, or, or initiate, or whatever, approve, yes.
Okay.
So, um, for your all.
I just wanted to know your intent.
Sure.
Now, you don't want babysitter, please, I understand that, but, but I want to know what your intent would be.
Right.
Yeah, that was, now, let me tell you, that was a trade-off.
It's given to you, yeah.
And what the city had requested of Summit Creek was to
Access.
for the city to have access to all the trails. They, they have a concern with that, with their HOA insurance. Uh, they indicated that they're not going to object to city using it down there, but at the same time, it's not going to be promoted.
No.
So.
And I understand that from a liability perspective, I 100%.
So in exchange, that Summit Creek came up with it, this wasn't our idea, this was Summit Creek's idea to, to do this and to donate, so that the city could develop some of our own trails, or establish them in, in this part of the city, and those will be open to Summit, to anybody, to Summit Creek as well, so.
I just wanted to know your, your intent there, and it's your question, because we did discuss that.
I have a question. Um, on one part of it, it's reserved legislative powers. It says developer acknowledges that the city is restricted in its authority to limit its police power, does that mean police power?
Just the, the.
The authority the city has.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with police.
Yeah.
I didn't think of that.
It doesn't. It's just a, a verbiage.
So what does it mean, that limited in what, in their control of?
That whatever, how, what agreement dictates to be done, that's what will be done. So and the city with the power that it has, that's what the city is agreeing to.
For instance, you don't have an opinion, right?
Yeah.
That's a police power.
So whatever powers the city has won't be limited.
Really will be.
Except by the agreement, by whatever the city's agreeing to have the agreement. Now, one issue that was, has been a, has been an issue, but I think we resolved it, is that when this agreement is signed, whatever city ordinances are in place at that time, that's what Summit Creek will be living with for the duration of this agreement. As we change or modify or update any of our ordinances, it'll affect development.
They're not bound to it.
They're not bound unless they want.
Correct.
Except if it's a federal or. Except if it's a federal or state, health and safety, welfare.
Then a Trump's.
Then, that's right, then they get a lot of, a lot of that, but other than that, and the reason that, and that's kind of a standard phrase in a lot of, a lot of developments, because it gives them, it gives the developer an understanding of what they're facing, and, and the city a year from now does.
Yeah.
Say, we're, we're rezoning on your property and, you know, throw it all into.
It's kind of invested.
Yeah.
Point they're vested, and then they, and then that's.
Yeah.
Grandfathering on any future stuff. So traffic calming, I'm assuming this applies to new development, not like Summer Creek driving.
No, that supplies the Summer Creek drive.
Does it?
But, yeah, it's part of.
Okay, so I'm a plow driver here, and I'm just trying to picture a speed bump with the plow.
Right, so we don't want the traditional speed bump, right? We would like something a little more, if, if it ends up happening.
Stuff that's not quite as high and a lot more.
Right, so that's it, so that it's favorable to the snowplows.
Yes, so, so make sure that's designed, it could, there is nothing more jarring on those plows, I mean, you know how great some of our roads are here? There is nothing more jarring on the plow than when you go twenty-five to thirty, thirty-five and hit some of that structure.
Yeah. But that's, that's a public road, so the city will control that, but we'll have.
That's why I just wanted to know if that would affect that, and if so, as long as it's engineered as such.
Right.
Um, because we do get deep enough snow here that you may not see the bump with the snow, if the snow is foot deep by the time we get down, and for some reason, that bump may not be distinguished. And so we're cruising along, and all of a sudden, it's, wow.
Right.
All right. So that may be in conjunction with the city, probably some engineering.
Yep.
All right.
And there likely will be markers on the sign. So those would be helpful to identify where those, where those speed bumps are too, if they're all covered.
Cause in a blizzard, we see all that.
Yeah.
You might see these, you might see these.
They're standing six feet tall.
No, you still don't understand. If it's a full on blizzard.
Yeah.
Just crossing your.
We don't, yeah, there, there is some finger crossing on the initial pass.
It doesn't snow.
Once we can get, where you can get some, some, uh, some depth perception, then it's fine. When you're on initial special in the middle of the night, and it's just coming down.
Yeah, there's a melt.
I see that. That's where people get stuck and driving off the side.
Yes. What works to our advantage is we drive it lots, but we got a good fill for it. But still, yeah.
All right, just wondering.
That's a good question, too.
So, look, look that over, we will, we'll be having a public hearing, and followed by a further discussion and planning commission. As we, uh.
Match, so you're gonna be having a lot of gates, I saw that.
Just adding two more on the upper part.
You're doing, yeah, you're doing nevo, nevo.
And then on nevo.
Yeah, then you're doing that, I, I couldn't get it down. One down by one times. You've got the one gate in now, and then you'd be putting the one in on evenness.
That's right.
So you'd be adding four more gates.
One, two, three, four, five, so one on loafer angle list.
Yeah, so five more.
Yeah.
So question I have for that, being on the fire department. So this, so the Yelp, those things are all great when they work.
Right.
But when they don't work.
Right.
Depending on what we're responding to, we've got certain options available or not available. So my question is, at that point there, if we have to use a bumper of vehicle to get through that, who's going to pay for the damage to the afterrests?
We hope that that won't happen, because, but they're looking, a, a key code possibly, so a key would open it if the Yelp doesn't work. Look at a number of different options there, uh, which will be the most effective.
So doing, so from a city perspective. A full disclosure, if for some reason there is a delay in the response time.
They're fully responsible.
Full indemnification, yes, could be there, that, that the city needs to cover themselves on that, just so, I'm not sure you guys have discussed.
We've gone through this.
Well, I'm sure.
With the existing gays trying to get those to remain operable, we went through that quite a bit, so we're, we're aware.
So they absolve the city of any liability, should there be a problem?
Because you have somebody that's, we responded a few days ago to a car that afterrest, um. Every second counts, for, yeah, a stroke, every second counts, um.
Yeah.
You know, structural fire. Uh, nowadays, uh, a room of contents fired doubles every minute. You know, so just things like that, and I'm sure Craig's addressed this with you guys, this is just me saying.
I get it, and it's, everyone needs to be comfortable.
Residents say it's fine and dandy right now, and they're okay with it, till it's their dad or their daughter's, or husband, or their wife's, and heart attack. Then all of a sudden, they don't care anymore.
Right.
So, yeah, as long as that's supposed to be addressed and full indemnification to the city on that, if there's a lawsuit.
Yeah.
So that, that would be so much.
But if you, you look through that further, you'll, you'll come across that paragraph.
Yeah, I got the twenty pages on six. I'll chance to read it all.
Okay.
I have a question, who names the roads?
Developer.
Yeah.
Developer in concert with the city.
Do you have, do you have a name you'd like us to use?
I'm worried it would be a great street, but, no, I just think you've really got to be careful you don't use any of the words over again that are.
Yeah, for sure, like loafer.
Cities try to watch that.
Maple Drive, Elka, Elka Point.
Yeah, so we have.
Those same words.
We have a marketing, part of our marketing, the, a team that we hire helps us come up with names, we don't necessarily have to use them, but we have a list of available ones that they think are nice. But to your point too, like loafer where it connects to Bear Hollow. Where we're gonna change that, we probably won't call that loafer, I think the city prefer that we don't, just cause it's confusing.
Well, even Deer Metal turns into Summer Creek.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's always. That, that is confusing, I understand it now, but initially that's confusing.
So during the plat process, we would put, we would suggest names and get the city's input, so.
Yeah, as I'm typing an address is on the utility program, I notice.
Yeah.
That's true, you do see that, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming the land swap's all part of this too, and it's.
Yeah. Robert Nelson had to change his whole sub, subdivision and all the street names, cause there was so much similarity with Summer Creek and the city app.
Oh.
Down there, we changed it all.
Has their face, the Jasons and the Lucille and all that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And those are your name, I don't think those are.
Yeah.
Is that what he did, he just called?
What's Jason's Cove, Lucille Cove, and.
Kelly's Cove.
Must be.
Lucille's Cove.
Well, Kelly and Lucille are Jason's grand.
I'm guessing, yeah.
Probably some.
Yeah.
But the lower streets were Autumn, Winter, Vol, and those were, those were.
Yeah.
And I like the way, if there's like, Autumn, I don't know, if there's an Autumn street to have an Autumn circle that is like coming off of that, not in a different area of the town.
Well, then again, for us, we'll respond to that.
Um, that's true. I think.
Okay. Okay. Uh.
So do, do we need to make a recommendation to move this to the next step, or this is just?
Yeah, just re-intervention. The general plan.
Can we, one, one, one more question, you're short. Can we have any sense along the interest of fate? Could we schedule a public hearing? Or we just need to wait, can we get that?
Yeah. We, we've decided to wait, because. Have you ever tried to set a tunnel on a journey? We haven't had really good success.
We tried.
Yeah, good luck.
It's a pressure. I know that someone is anxious.
Yeah.
And so I think, um.
Everyone's been putting their best foot forward, it's, there's, it's all finger pointing, it's just we're all working towards the end, and we're getting close.
So a question for you, um, you know, Bear Hall, that is, we've got with fire stuff. I'll call it gravel pit, I'm not sure where the road kind of goes, it's just that area's been cleared out. Um, I'm just curious, this is, I'd be curious to see where that falls in the plat.
Yeah, we have a preliminary one, we actually reviewed.
Yeah, I saw that today, that's when I tried to print out, I couldn't.
Yeah, it's our part, our plan is to develop that as well.
Yeah, just working it, I mean, it's been raked and pillaged, so it'll be interesting to see how you guys work that.
Right, yeah, there's some things we have to work through with Phil, that we don't know where it came from, and, you know.
Yeah, you probably have to have somebody.
Have to do geotag.
Yeah, geotag, all right.
Let me see if I can give you my comment.
And it's, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's decent size.
And we talked, that's a great spot for fire, you can get, it's the same place to be.
Yeah.
But that'll change in time with this. Don't worry about it.
My problem, I have, my house, my, my son running out.
Where's your bike ride go?
Most have, yeah, we know that.
Is the cul-de-sac?
Now, there'll be a gate, running, we have to go.
So what you have to learn is just run around, you need to learn how to bunny hole.
Yeah, right.
And then just, just bunny hole. Player of five foot five. There's guys that can do it.
Yeah, so I'm guessing it's probably about right in this area.
That's it. I was just a bit about that. Yeah, it's this one.
Yeah, it's kind of the sort of, I've been hearing, yeah, that'll just be interesting to see how that took out.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to.
Yeah, you're right, there's still there is what?
There may be some money that's available to the city, or, um. Also develop the general plan further, if there were some surveys needed, or if you can't. So we're, we're trying to sort through that and see if, if there's a grant that the city got. It had to do with community development and ordinances, and, uh, we're trying to, uh, put that down a little bit more to, uh, see what parts of the general plan may be able to take advantage of that by way of, whether it's a survey, or getting professional, professional city planners to come in and, and work with us on on developing that out, making the changes and so forth that need to be made. So, uh, Jones and DeMille has people like that on staff.
City planner.
Uh-huh, so we may, would tap into them if this money is available, which we kind of think it is. Um, so it's, we're, we're assessing that now, but what I, what I suggest is for the sections that each of us have, start being really acquainted with those sections, and even, uh, maybe start putting some verbiage together or changes, uh, you think need to be made, uh, doing some drafts. Uh, from just your knowledge of what the plan says, and what you feel that there, where, where changes need to be made. This is gonna go through a number of reiterations, and so, don't, you know. Things are gonna get changed around a lot, well, let's, let's start giving some thought to those, those sections that we're assigned, and see where the needs are, and start doing some drafting on, on your own there, and at least it'll give us a start. Uh, if we do get some professional help in, in working on this and, and doing it, and, um, when, when we have a, our, you know, more of a complement, maybe one of our upcoming future meetings with everybody. We can share what we've done, and you'll, and get input from everybody on, on on your section, on other sections, thoughts that they might have as they read through this, and, uh, kind of continue to enlarge upon, upon what might be there. Any, any thoughts or comments?
Well, the, the section that I had responsibility for has, like, the zoning map. And I think that would be a place that if we have money, that we can get that provisioned and redone.
We should be able to get that without the money.
Yeah.
Jones and DeMille.
Should be pretty easy.
Done that, so I think it'd be a pretty standard thing that we can ask them to buy that.
Because, um, I mean. Summer Creek's not even on there.
Yes.
Their load's not even on there.
In fact, just so that you know, there's emergency, it's, it's, it's an old version of that thing behind you. But it was our, it was an emergency map, uh, we've asked Jones and DeMille to update that. And, and Ted's about got it done, he showed me a draft today, and it shows four seasons. It shows the, the new road going down there, it shows leased lots cut out of the plaques that have been approved. Uh, so it gives you a lot of configurations, uh, so that'll be, that'll be a big help. And, but the zoning map does need to get, have some updates to it as well.
Yeah.
So we may incorporate those two, and, and, cause then it's easier to see. So our zoning map, sometimes it's hard to know, well, which side of the street is this zone, and which is that zone. And with a map like this, it has all the lots laid out, then it's easy to make those cuts. On that, so we'll definitely make an update, read update back.
The other thing that explains is the population projections. And so that might mean something too.
Okay. A lot of that information professional planners have ready access to as well.
They've got algorithms, like just.
So, uh, well, a certain question, we can get that kind of help.
It'd be less, so.
Okay, any other questions on, on that? I guess we won't have any people sign on here, will we?
No, no, but anybody can look at this.
Yeah. The referendum's been filed on the parts of the ordinance changes having to do with open space.
The redefining of that?
Yes.
Really? That's what I said.
Really?
Uh, it's, it's most, one of the most stupid things I've seen, but it is what it is. And, uh, let me give you a little bit of background on it. With, with the Adams home, one of the things that the Fugees have objected to is uh, between Adams home and Fugee's home, there's, it's a side yard. And they've objected to putting any kind of a wall or retaining barrier or anything else along there up against the property line. They say, well, that's open space, and you can't put anything in open space. Well. That open space, the, those two words are, are used in those backyard, side yard, backyard, rear yard, as adjectives, and not nouns. In fact, another place in those definitions, uh, there is a definition of open space. Which is the correct definition, what, what we consider open space to be on some of the apps. So the, the Fugees and their experts have maintained that the Adams can't, they have to leave that open. They can't do anything.
So they can't use that part of the table.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be undisturbed ground.
Yeah.
Now, as I had said, I will link my comment in the other mention. There is absolutely no way that you can use undisturbed ground around house. When you dig for the foundation, you're gonna disturb something that goes beyond the foundation. When you build the two percent for twelve feet, that you have to have according to our ordinances, you have to disturb the ground.
E- even to the point of putting grass.
Yeah.
You know, or just.
The running driveway of the site.
So it's just asinine for them to think that that definition means it's open space, and you can't do anything with it. So that's why we changed to clarify, not to, not to change what open space is.
Or find the truth.
Clarify what's correct.
Well, the other thing is if that is the definition of open space, anybody can put a park there, right?
Cause it's open space.
Because it's public.
But that's not.
I know, it's not the intent.
They just, and let's assume for a minute that they're, they get all the signatures that they need for the referendum. So what options does the city have? One is to go back and say, okay, we'll leave open space here, but we determine what that means.
Sure.
So there's been nothing gained there, or we say, well, instead of putting, we use the word area, an area between instead of open space. Now we use another term, not area, to redefine the, the ordinance, and start all over. So.
By space.
I'm not sure what's gonna happen, so what's required for a referendum? They have to get, uh, I think fifty, fifty-one percent signatures of voters, registered voters. So I think it's around, and it may not, that might be too, too high, but it's, it's in that category. Signatures and then those signatures are verified by the county.
Yeah.
On, um.
I don't think they have to get fifty-one percent.
Yeah, and that's too high, I think. Yeah. I'm thinking thirty.
So what's that number?
It's around, we have fourteen hundred give or take residences, right?
Residents, that's not registered voters.
Yeah.
If we're fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, hundred residents.
Probably not many registered voters.
Registered voter.
Working at like nine hundred or something.
Cause maybe I'm in error. Did you just register voters or is it residents? Well, I did, maybe I misspoke.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I have a question. For the ref, reference, I think it's, it's just residents.
Correct.
Yeah, I think they have to register.
Okay. It seems like last time there were kind of maybe three hundred signatures that they hadn't yet. Uh, for the referendum. Now, the second one, you know, the second referendum they filed, they didn't do anything. They didn't get enough signatures, I think. It, it can kind of be a secret on their part. They don't have to provide that information and they haven't. But the referendum never passed, so they didn't get enough signatures. And I'm trying to think what it was that I forgot what that second referendum was that they tried to institute. So that's the story with this one, with their current referendum. It's, our attorney has it looking at it, has it reviewed, so we'll see where, where that goes. The under ten miscellaneous, I, um, I got feedback from our attorneys of having reviewed the container accessory building. And, uh, did I, have I sent that out to you?
Yeah.
I'm done.
And I think they did a thorough job of reviewing it.
They did. And there was one thing that they pointed out that we may, that we were, we probably maybe concretely with this, but the accessory building is supposed to be twenty feet from another structure. But then we have in there twelve feet, twelve foot standard. I'm talking to Corbett. If the building is within twelve feet of the main building, it's considered to be.
Extended.
Part of.
It has a fire sprinklers, everything.
Has the same thing. So it's not really clear in our accessory building ordinance that that differentiation, the twenty feet, the twelve feet. We do say that any accessory building has to be twenty feet away. I talked to Corbett, his understanding was that if it's fifteen feet away, then it's, it can't be an accessory building. It has to be another building and comply with code with the construction out of it. So it's accessory building that, that applies to accessory building standards as codes.
More immediately.
Right. But if it's anything closer.
But even an accessory building needs fires for things. If it's over.
If it's over.
Ashby, I know.
Yeah.
And I, I, I just agree with that.
Uh?
Isn't it?
Yeah.
I think it's too much.
Too high square feet. Um, I don't know if you have a chance to read, to read that. I just didn't read it at all.
I think it's on at six o'clock.
Okay. So it, I didn't anticipate getting it back from your attorneys this soon, so that's the reason I did put it on the agenda. Uh, so, um, look it over and we'll put it on next month's agenda. I'm not prepared to do a final tonight, but.
We've already had a public hearing.
We have.
So we really can just.
Just our decision as to what, how we want to craft that. My tendency is to generally follow what our attorneys have given to us. And it, there's one part that they included in there, cause it's part D, it has to do with HOA and CCORs. And we removed that from our ordinances and they didn't know that.
Correct.
So that part will be taken out.
Now, didn't they also mention that our ordinances on accessory buildings require a fifty foot setbacks on corner lots?
Yeah, I clarified that. They never talked about thirty feet. And they did, because it wasn't in the, it wasn't articulated in the accessory building uh, ordinance, the, the chart that they had there. So we may need to just tweak that a little bit and, and addressing that that they, they had, so.
It's good to run things by them because you get a fresh set, new eyes.
Yeah.
I mean, and questions that we don't think about, but you just take the red.
Now, we learned too that Jones DeMille has a entity that helps cities like ordinances. So much cheaper than attorneys.
Yes.
So the city's looking to, in fact, to share with you. Uh, we had a presentation yesterday from, a number of years ago, Jones DeMille bought a company that does the same thing as.
Quarter fires.
As quarter fires.
Oh.
And, uh, so it's less expensive and they, there's a whole bunch of services that they offer as part of this. And including, for example, putting minutes in our readings online that are searchable. So you don't have to, it's either December or November.
Kind of keyword that pulls.
Yeah. So that, there's a whole, there's a whole litany of things that they, they provide together with that. So the city's giving some strong consideration to changing the limits to be, be. So, um, anyway, uh, maybe I'll put a kind of a draft together from looking at that and send it to everybody and get some feedback in the meantime. We want to have, I kind of want to give you heads up too, that we want to have a, we'll probably call a special meeting for for public hearing for the development agreement rather than wait another thirty days. There has to be a two weeks notice.
Correct.
So depending on what went, our attorneys are through with the draft and how that relates to June meeting. We'll see how that fits here, but rather than delay things further.
That speaks things up for you guys to be ready for too.
Yeah, we, we try to do that. So appreciate that. We'll see how that looks in the schedule.
I will not be here for the next meeting, Mr..
Okay, you're not there.
I do the fourteenth and the twentieth.
Fourteenth and twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for that information.
With Israel and over half of town.
Oh, really?
For the passion plan.
Oh, wow.
When I lived in Germany, it was between, between, you know, from nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty, they have it every ten years. And we were there from seventy-three to seventy-seven. So I missed it.
Didn't they not have it recently?
They have it in twenty twenty because of COVID. And they pushed it off in twenty twenty-two. We'd already made commitments to go and we said, just keep our money in and move over in twenty twenty-two. So, yeah, good. That's your point.
So the fifteenth.
We haven't seen a general meeting. I should be here.
Pardon me?
Fifteenth of June will be the normal meeting.
Right.
The third Wednesday, that's, that's right.
That's when I had it. I don't know. About next, but I mean, that's, okay. Larry's already had his vacation time, so.
Must have been a vacation time.
He didn't want to take off.
Okay.
See if they're shit on your house. Have a good night.
All right, you too. Be safe. Okay. Anything else that anybody's got or questions?
So I learned what we got today.
Why don't I send you to the, because we've said a lot. This has been a horrible week. The Fugees have filed several more appeals on, on things. But the city is going to schedule, it is scheduled today, their appeal hearing on IBC IRC code for June second. Uh, this will be heard that by three building inspectors from different cities around. That's a, they're professional and they're the ones who'll hear this because it relates to building code, not to land use issues. So, uh, we, we tried to schedule one, but we learned, we've forgotten that we have to give two weeks notice and so later on canceled. And so this is scheduled today then, given it two weeks notice for this, for this hearing. This is one of the hearings that I think I'm right, yes. Then what the district court judge sent back to the city because of.
Yeah, said, the court said they weren't going to do anything because of the curve.
Yeah, I remember reading that. So this is one of those. There were two that were sent back. So this is one. So.
This isn't the same thing that we already had the hearing for, the, where the contractors came and.
It was different than that.
Okay.
But that was decided and that did go forward to district court. They got, the court upheld the dismissed motion.
Okay.
On that.
Okay.
When.
That was the summary judgment one.
Yeah, yeah. There's another one that the Fugees appealed to the circuit court, Utah circuit court appealed from the district court. And, uh, their attorney, after it got filed, this is about a week ago, ten days ago, their attorney, who they've had all along, withdrew from that. He filed a letter with the court saying he was withdrawing his counsel. So we're not clear whether at an appellate level, if the court allows them to represent themselves or if they're required to have an attorney. Nobody, nobody's clear on that. So they have though until the twentieth to file their response to the brief that the city filed. The, the timeline is the Fugees file their brief to get, to get on, on this court schedule. And then the city responds to that. And then they as petitioners have an opportunity to file a response to the city's motion. So they have till twentieth, which is a couple of days from now to file their response. If they don't, likely that will be dismissed. So I don't know where it's going. Anyway, uh, just more of the same, uh, continues out of beta.
One, um, question. I, I saw the letter that you sent to someone about their request to change the front setbacks.
Oh, yes.
The fifty feet, thirty feet, that basically we said.
Trying to do the thing.
We don't have the authority.
Correct.
So they're going to have to go through the adjustment process to get a variance.
So a case by case, yeah.
Now, this is the question. Is it possible, with as many of those lots are all owned by the development itself, could they come in and do several lots in one? In one meeting?
Yeah.
Would I just think more, there's one thing out?
It's just going to cost them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To do it.
The thing is, they may not need to know that many lots. Depends on what's going to get built up.
Yeah.
And they don't know at this point.
He came back and he only identified three lots that they were interested in having the setback changed on.
So they know they have a three.
Person who wants to change the setback, but they only had three. If they, after they looked at it all, looked like they only had three.
Okay.
But they can come in with one request and.
For all three of those.
Three of those.
That's probably, I mean, I, you know, I, I guess I feel a little bit because the old adjustment process didn't cost people any money. And this one's going to cost you money.
Yeah. We're anticipating ballpark, maybe fifteen hundred dollars for each hearing that these hearing offices are going to have by the time you pay debt for your time.
Here we.
So it's not, not cheap.
Yeah.
Make sure you really want it.
Yeah.
Cause a fifteen hundred dollars doesn't guarantee you're going to get it. It just guarantees you get hurt.
Were Ted and, and John going to look at?
We did. Yeah. And what was given to him that day, remember, was for him to go and actually shoot great. You may, Wayne even referenced that.
Yeah.
For Bob or his homeowner to actually go and shoot great at those specific spots. But Ted and I went and looked and it's all, it's literally just the corner. But again, if, if they shoot great, then we've got exact numbers. It was Ted and I that.
He said they've done that.
Okay, we haven't.
But they haven't shared that with us.
Yeah, we haven't seen any.
But there, they talked to us about coming forward for a variance request. And he said, that's up to you. That's, that was almost a week and a half ago.
Okay.
We haven't heard from him since.
We met on Wednesday night. Ted and I were going to go Thursday. We ended up going to fly. We went there two days after he and I met there. We went, we looked at the corner, cause Ted had been there with him and looked at it, um. So, you know, those things, it's good to see. It wasn't really just the corner. But again, I want, if you don't want to see hard numbers, cause.
For two of the lots, the, the two right behind Ted on Hoover Land? Cause that really has a pretty steep profile.
Yeah.
For two lots, but the ones down at the end of it, there is no way that those.
Yeah, yeah. This one was down in Four Seasons and we went and looked at the ball.
Oh, okay, yes.
We weren't looking at, uh, some agreements. This is for Robert.
Oh, I thought we were, we were going to look.
Not, not on this issue.
The thing Ted and I had looked at was one specific lot in Four Seasons. It was Jason's Cove on the coast.
That's the one that we talked about.
That was one that Robert Nilsen was here and we were looking at. So the recommendation was to give us exact grades. So, so conceptually Ted and I saw what it was about, but we wanted to see exactly.
Yeah.
The, but Ted and I both thought, if, if he wanted to hold it two feet above the curb, it wasn't going to happen. If he's willing to drop it at the curb, then, then that could potentially.
But they're going to have, potentially some other problems on there.
All the lot coming around.
Out from it.
Out to all other.
And I see a similar situation.
That's even worse.
Yeah.
But.
And some of that goes, and, and, and Robert has taken responsibility for it.
It was better.
He had a misunderstanding of how our height ordinance was calculated and what lot and he could have, he could have built those, or he could have lowered that a little, those cul-de-sacs a little bit.
He could have.
And not had an adverse effect on anything else.
Well, the other challenge is some of the architects that some of these home builders are getting don't care what the standards are.
They just do this.
You're right.
Well, we, yeah, cause the three of us look at site one approvals. And I'm still amazed that some of the stuff that we see come through here that are from architects and builders that have already done multiple projects here. And I, I still look at it's like, okay, you should know this by now.
They, yeah.
If I call them repeat offenders. They keep making the same mistake. It's like, you should understand this by now. You're on the third, fourth, fifth, sixth one of this.
Yeah. And you know, if somebody's buying a lot for five, six hundred thousand dollars, you know, you, there's, you can't put any home on any lot. That if you're, if you're having a home, an architect go home, that architect should have all that kind of detail when they start designing the.
Architect and the engineer should understand the parameters before they spend too much money on design.
Yeah. Uh, you can't, well, this is our dream home. Well, it may not fit on that lot, you know?
Right.
That's the wise ones of the, the biggest, you know, the ones who are disappointed the most and realizing that, oh, that's might not happen, you know? But that's, that's.
Well, which is why some homeowners are buying adjacent lots to accommodate.
They are.
Their dream.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would.
And that's regular.
To me makes sense. You can't fit, you can't fit a square peg in a round hole.
Yeah. They're finding out that a lot of money doesn't require approval from the city to move it.
Right.
Very well.
Those of us that are.
You what?
Just all of us. And what was the other term?
Capricious.
Oh, yeah. Capricious. Oh, yeah, capricious, uh, it's another one.
Arbitrator.
Arbitrator, capricious, yeah.
And, uh, and then there was another one, what I called it when I came here. Mister. Indiscreet.
So, okay, anything else? Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn second.
All right, all in favor? Very good. Thank you for coming tonight, everybody. Leave that, shut that off.